So there are 13 people vying for the eight spots for the Brea City Council. We're here at the Russell Lacton Folk Center in Brea where we got to speak to some of these people running as well as see the entire panel.
Probably would be to run some surveys, to get some different type of businesses and stuff into the town as far as upgrading some of the buildings that we do have empty that need stuff in them. Some of the streets and stuff in Brea still needs to be upgraded. We need to start spending our money a little bit wiser on some things that would help the middle-class people as well as our kids, to keep our kids at home. Most of them do have a good time. They have to go to Lexington or Richmond or somewhere else. We have no cinemas, very few restaurants. You know, you look in Richmond and every time you look up, you've got a new steakhouse. Boy, does Brea have it. We shouldn't have to drive to Richmond to get something. We should be able to get it here in Brea.
Ms. Laffontaine?
Hello? Oh, that's nice. I got a good one. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for being here and being so engaged. It's been a really interesting experience getting to know you all and following all of the local politics, especially lately. So I am very impressed by all of the engagement and am thankful. Now, the city has already done a lot of work to make it easier for businesses to start up. If you compare it to places like Richmond, you will hear, for example, Apollo's Pizza, when you speak to the owner, he'll say, "It was so much easier for me to start my business here than it was in Richmond." And I think there's some of those things that we can keep working with and working with companies like, or agencies like Mesa that assist people and help them know that they exist, that if they have a small business idea, they can find resources. But also, I think the strip that we have, we can beautify it in a way that would make it more welcoming. And I think that has also already started thanks to a citizen named Ollie and just reaching out to business owners to help people who, for no wrong reason, just haven't upgraded or painted, you know, their businesses in quite a while. So I would look to making those sorts of partnerships to just revitalize what we already have going and continue that. So, thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Lamb?
Yes, I think that to bring in more businesses to the downtown area, we need to, like Mr. Martin said, to, the buildings need to be upgraded. I've heard stories of several of them that leave. The owners don't take care of the buildings, so people don't want to rent and move into those buildings. We've had some revitalization downtown. We've had some really great businesses open. Let's Go Brea has started trying to revitalize the park down there. So hopefully, these things will bring more businesses and we can recruit other small businesses like, you know, Nuno Rivera or Nathan Beagle into that area so that it'll make it more appealing to other people.
Thank you. Mr. LaFontaine?
Thank you. I think we have more than Old Town. I think the health and viability of Old Town is a reflection currently of the retirement of a number of craft people that have been in Brea for a long time. If we're going to keep that going, those craft people are going to have to be replaced. They come here by choice. That's how they got here. To limit our focus just on Old Town, I think would be a mistake. I think we've had ideas put before City Council for beautifying all of Brea, including Chestnut Street. I think we would be remiss if we didn't extend our efforts to include that.
Thank you. Mr. Fredrickson?
I think Brea is kind of a weird town when it comes to talk about the center of Brea because there is not a bar from Brea College. And there's a lot of business going on up there, but we have to take advantage of the whole Brea. The strip was not mentioned, there are lots of businesses out there, downtown, Old Town is very important, and of course Chestnut Street. But I think it needs rebranding or Brea tourism. 15, 20 years ago, when I came to town, I was in town already, the target audience was ladies over 35. And I already opposed it at that time. What about their kids? What about their husbands? What about their grandparents? Are we not going to do anything for them? It has been the same ever since. The target is ladies over 35. That's not good enough because at that time, that was the notion that they were the ones who wanted to spend money. I think if we expand the alcohol sale, that could be a win-win situation for us. We talked about what kind of restaurants do we want in town? What kind of quality do we want them to have? It doesn't only come down to what kind of restaurants. It comes down to what kind of employees do we want. It also comes down to the notion that if somebody wants to open a business, they have to realize that they're self-employed and they have to be ready to fail. They have to be ready to lose all their money. So it's not just about getting a business to town. It's about finding what is needed and what can be successful. So being self-employed, as I have been, is not an easy task. You can dream, high dreams, but you also have to be ready to fail and you have to be ready to work 60, 80 hours a week, otherwise you won't work.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
I think over the last two years, probably two to four years, we stepped into a different era of city business development. We hired a new business developer. He has since left, but the one thing that he did, and I think that the city started to do, was be a resource for businesses who want to come to Brea. Brea City Government can't be in the business of being in business. And so, the number one thing that we can do to revitalize any part of our city, whether that be Chestnut Street, Old Town, is to be a resource for those who want to open a business. We spend a great deal of time thinking about how can we make people come here? How can we get people to come here? And if they don't have answers when they ask questions, we'll never put a business in our city. And we worry oftentimes, why do we want to get certain things? And there are certain businesses that will never come to Brea. And the reason is demographics. We don't have the number of people to get maybe a Texas lawnmower or whatever. But what we are doing is that we're focusing on the things that we're good at, which is small businesses in those areas, opening and supporting those small businesses. We have to do everything that we can to get citizens of Brea to support the businesses that open because oftentimes, we see businesses open and they don't make it very well. And the reason is because people don't patronize those businesses. So if we continue to build resources, we'll continue to get more businesses, and we have to do everything that we can to ourselves and get those around us to patronize those businesses. And that's the best way that we can get people to come to Brea.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
So far, I've agreed with, most everything's been set up here, especially with Mr. LaFontaine, that if you focus on one part of the city, then you can kill another part of the city. So if you focus on Chestnut Street, you could kill another part of the city. And it comes to redoing it, making it look nice, making it proper and ready for businesses to come in and take over. In a way, it is the job of the city to help local businesses get their name out. If the city doesn't do that, then what are we here for?
Thank you. Our next question. I'm so sorry.
You're going to leave me out?
I am so sorry.
Oh. Steve did a wonderful job answering. I will say that infrastructure is one of the most important things that the city can do is to continually make improvements to infrastructure, to the park system, to the pathways, sidewalks, shared use paths, anything that's going to make Brea a more livable community. Because if somebody's going to move their business here, they want to actually live in the city as well. They want to be able to, you know, have a reasonable traffic flow to get from point A to point B, to be able to go outside and do things to, you know, the more livable the community, the more it draws other people and other businesses into the community.
Thank you. The next question, I will begin with Ms. Laffontaine. What is your vision of growth for Brea? If elected, how would you make that happen?
My vision of growth for Brea and how would I make it happen? Yes. Growth can take many different forms, and I think we tend to focus more on the financial capital when we talk about growth, and we talk about annexing out, and we talk about big industries coming in. And that's all really great if we can do that. The problem is that when we bring in those bigger companies, do we have some of the social infrastructure to sustain the people working in them? Do we have enough daycares to watch their children while they're at work? Do we have housing available, affordable housing available to them? So I would say there are ways we can scale up as a city if we're willing to focus on more than just bringing in big jobs, which is great, but we have to keep in mind the rest of what that impacts. And so, we can scale up slowly. We've already annexed out. I think we need to help some of those folks that are going to be impacted when they leave their manufacturing jobs right now and make it more available for them to either start their own business or seek outside more businesses coming in, which is not a problem necessarily. We just want to be mindful of when we're bringing in these big businesses, that they are doing it environmentally sound, that the company is solvent and not going to come in and open up and close in a year. So those are some things I would keep in mind, I would say. I think the city definitely needs a strategic plan. We need to sit down and figure out how we're going to make this growth happen in a responsible and then also ethical way.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn? The question is, what is your vision of growth for Brea? And if elected, how would you make that happen?
Recruit businesses that offer good paying, permanent jobs with health benefits and...
What is your vision of growth for Brea and how would you make it happen?
Recruit businesses that offer good paying jobs.
Mr. LaFontaine?
Vision for growth. Brea is going to need a growing workforce. We need to court industries to come to Brea and locate here. We can encourage that through the development of property that we already own. You've heard the term shovel-ready. We have experience with the factories that have already been built here. We know what types of infrastructure are necessary to promote the quick turnaround of the factory located here. There are cities that are doing this and developing spec buildings that are all ready for industries to move into, to move their equipment into and locate here. A part of that is the caliber of our workforce. We need to have better programs available to our young people so that they are learning not just A's and C's, but as they get into their upper years of school, they're learning trades. I'm a tradesman myself. I feel like I have job security. As a carpenter, my future is secure as long as my body holds out. I'm not worried about continuing my career. Part of the vision for growth for Brea is providing our first responders with compensation that will keep them at home. We need them to mature in their careers here. We don't need them spending their first two or three years as rookies to gain a level of qualification that helps them go somewhere else to get more pay. That's happening to us. As a result, anybody who is dealing with our law enforcement, our fire protection people are seeing new faces in the crew. I feel like the caliber of law enforcement in our community would be greatly improved if they'd been here for five or 10 or 15 years. They know you. You know them. You've become accustomed to the way that they respond to issues.
Time's up. Sorry. Mr. Fredrickson?
About growth, I think it all boils down to education, and I think it's very important that we support our schools and our teachers all we can because without a healthy youth, we don't have a healthy population. And the education is not only academic, it has to be vocational as well. If we want to attract any new industries, we need to make sure we understand what the demands from the industries are. And if we don't have the labor force that they demand, they won't move to town. There can be other reasons why industries and businesses want to move to town. It is that Brea provides a bunch of healthy, attractive cultural activities, including sports activities. We want to make sure that there's relevant and good housing for new employees and old employees, but for that matter too, in town. One of the things that could be attractive is that production of solar energy panels, I think it's very important to think about. It is upcoming. It is attractive for me to protect our nature, our earth, and look at alternative ways of bringing business to town. And I think if you want businesses in town, you better shop here. You can't go to Richmond, you can't go to Lexington every other time you want to shop. If you want to see your businesses here in Brea in three years, you better stop shopping here tomorrow.
Mr. Cobb?
One of my, when I set up to run City Council the first time around, one of the main things that I think about, I have three others now, they're all very young, and I worry that when they're adults, that they will have to move away from Brea, not because they want to, but because they have no other option. Because there aren't jobs in the field that they want or in the type of work that they want to do that are in our area. So it's very important to me to continue to not only look at industrial recruitment, but also large business recruitment and find ways to get different types of businesses than we have or than we maybe looked at in the past. And again, this is sort of repeating myself, but we must be the number one resource when someone comes to the city of Brea looking to open a business. It can't be relying on people who are in the real estate business to do the things that we need to do to make ourselves attractive to both large and small businesses. As a City Council member, I have tried my best to always push that agenda as hard as I can through the work of the Economic Development Committee and our Economic Development Director. We have to continue to use the work that we've done over the last four years and build that so that we are always the first stop when a person comes to the city of Brea when they want to open a new business or they're thinking about areas where they could open a new business. We can't just look at one area. It has to be the entire gamut of business. We do need to work with our Madison County Schools to look at making a area technology center in Brea. I think that those conversations are continually happening so that we can train the next generation in trades so that we have the workforce. Because the number one problem that we face when an industry looks at Brea is not location, it's not being shovel-ready, it's not having spec businesses, it's having people who can actually work. Our current situation is, is that our unemployment is too low in Brea, and we need to attract that worker.
Thank you. Ms. Lamb?
Yes, I think that attracting the industry and businesses is one good way to get our community to have growth. But when we have these jobs here, when we get these industries, we have to have people that can pass drug tests to take the jobs because last year, there was reports that there were several industries with job openings, but we couldn't find anyone with the skill that could pass a drug test to even fill the positions. So we also need vocational schools, but like I said, if you can't pass a drug test, you're not even going to get through the door. So whether you've got the skills or not, the jobs are there, you just, they're not going to have people filling the positions. So that's one thing that's going to attract businesses, I think, if we have people that can actually be healthy, work, and have the skills that the industries and the businesses need.
Thank you. Mr. Van.
I'd like to build on what Mr. Cobb said earlier about vocational training. My understanding is a great many of our factories employ a great many people from outside the community. I will do anything I can if there's a way to bring vocational schools or build onto the existing schools to allow vocational training within them. Until then, I think that we should build on our strong factories that we already have, build partnerships with them to allow vocational training, both of high school age people as well as adults who need the vocational training specific to the factories that already exist in anticipation of factories that may come.
Thank you. And Mr. Martin?
Well, my theory is that growth is pretty much what you put in it. If you want your wires to grow, you've got to put water on them. You've got to put fertilizer on this stuff to make it grow, and that's what Brea is. If we don't put something into this, it's not going to grow. You've got to put something out there for the people to see, to bring it into Brea so that they can stay. If we don't do that, they're just going to keep going on down the road.
Thank you. Our next question is, how would you involve citizens in the decision-making process? And for this, we'll start with Mr. Cobb. How would you involve citizens in the decision-making process?
I think the best way that we can involve citizens in decision-making process is to be open and willing to talk to anybody who has a problem as we make decisions. One of the hardest parts about being on the City Council is sometimes I think people think that you, that you hear some of the things and you're a little insulated to it. So if we don't reach out and constantly make ourselves open and make sure that people realize that there is an open door policy if you want to talk to somebody on the council, then we aren't doing our job. The second piece of that is looking for opportunities to have public forums. Sometimes that's not viable when there's a project that needs to happen quickly and it can sort of really kind of balloon if you get into that. But the number one thing that we can do is to look for every opportunity to be transparent and to be open and to have public meetings and let people know when those public meetings are. I think that's one of our biggest problems is that sometimes we don't make it clear enough when they are. We think we do and we don't. We need that feedback from people. And then the other one is, is making sure that meetings are at times that people can actually attend to them. I run into the problem myself, to have a job, and it's very time consuming to have a job. And so, if you have a meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon, I won't be there unless it is really something crazy important because I'm going to have to take vacation time to go to that. And so, we have to always be cognizant, to make them public, be very, very clear when they are, and make them at times where people can actually attend them because most people have jobs from the entire spectrum of age. So we have to continue to always be keeping that in mind.
Thank you. Ms. Lamb?
I think one way to encourage citizen input is having the meetings at reasonable times that people can make them, having them video so people can watch them. If they can't make it, they can watch it at home or watch it whenever they're able to and have time to. Have public comments during the meetings for the people that can be there to stand up and say what they want to say about what's going on in the meeting. Encourage them to email, encourage them to come to the meetings, to email a phone call, you know, let them know you're available to reach out to, to discuss whatever issues are happening in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Van?
As others have said, we have to make sure that we're communicating effectively. We need to reach out the way people seek information and present that information as early as possible, as often as possible, through the media, whether it's Facebook or whether it's through email, whether it's through the cable channel, in time to allow people to let their voice be heard. Also to offer, you know, not just the people that show up in the meetings, but the people who can't make it, that they have clear options on how they can submit, not to specific members of the council, but to the entire body at once.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I think we need to make it to the point where, you know, a lot of people don't have email, Facebook. We need to put it out there a little bit more on another level where a lot of people will understand it. If it's by radio, TV, or newspaper, or whatever, you would be surprised at the people in Brea that doesn't have that, that luxury.
Thank you. Mr. LaFontaine?
I began my interest in city government a little more than two years ago, and it's a challenge to stay informed for what is happening. It's a challenge to become informed for what did happen. It's more of a challenge now with the absence of videos of our City Council meetings from the record. That has occurred in the last year with no explanation. We don't, it used to be half a year or more of City Council meetings that were available for viewing at your leisure. Those are gone now. You may find three meetings available, and those are the most recent ones. Meeting minutes need to be current for all commissions of the city. They are not. I don't know why not. That needs to be fixed. There needs to be a regular posting of the events of the city. They are posted, it's not regular. More people need to know what to expect and where they can find it. You've got to reach out, and it takes motivation. A person's got to decide, "I want to know this." But for those hot-button issues, if you become informed by talking to your neighbor, you need to know, you need to have it available to you to find out what's going on. So our city needs to do better with that.
Thank you. Mr. Fredrickson?
About involving citizens in the decision-making process, that's a tough one because democracy is very complicated and not all people want to be involved. A lot of people want to be involved more than maybe they should because there are also negotiations going on within the City Council that maybe not, maybe it's not the right time to expose where the process is. So it is very complicated, and we need to talk about two. Is this about power or is this, this is about building partnerships? I'm for transparency because we live in an open democracy, and the way we can do it is to use the social media and be open for meetings at the City Hall and have public meetings at different places. But I also understand what you're saying. It's not all people who have access to the social media, and we really, really need to take that into account. But transparency is the key in a democracy, and I think that's what we want. Democracy is... Democracy is different, even in Richmond and in Livingston and in Maria when it comes to city council and how people are elected. That's how mighty it is. But in Maria, we need to focus on the transparency.
Thank you. Ms. LaFontaine?
So I'm sitting here trying to really formulate my thoughts because this is one of the major reasons why I'm running. If you want to involve the public, you need to truly represent them. And why I'm here is because I've not felt represented on our city council. And I think there's a lot of people who share that sentiment. And the decision-making processes oftentimes don't even occur in the council chambers. We have people who are already coming into meetings, ready to go with all the votes they need to do whatever they wanna do. And I think we need to look at city council members who are willing to hold each other accountable. And like all of, everyone said, you know, transparency, record-keeping, making things available to the public, but also representing those voices that aren't heard or traditionally have not been heard because they've been marginalized for one reason or another. Because maybe they're in a domestic violence situation at home and they can't even think about city council meetings. Someone has to be a voice for them. Not everyone is going to use, even if you give 50 avenues for them to report something or to express themselves, they may still not be able to do that. And we need someone who's gonna elevate their stories too.
Thank you. And Ms. Land?
There's not much more that I can add that hasn't already been said. It's just that government on any level does not listen to the people anymore. And that's what we have to do, whether it's a tweet, a Facebook post, an email, something in the paper. We have to listen to the people. If we don't listen to the people, then we're not doing our jobs.
Thank you. The next question, I will start with Mr. LaFontaine, and it's a lengthy question. Some estimates show that 25% of Maria residents live under the poverty line. Their concerns include unstable jobs which are temporary or part-time, affordable childcare, housing, and homelessness. Do you think the city is adequately addressing these issues, and what would you do differently? Mr. LaFontaine?
Nope. Maria is a magnet for people on limited resources. That contributes to the increase of those number of people with low income or on fixed income.
Do you think the city is adequately addressing the poverty issue, poverty-related issues, and what would you do differently?
We've got to acknowledge those who are among us. We have an instance that I am aware of in the last week of homeless people residing at the pier gas station on US 25 South, just out, just below Chestnut. And I haven't driven by there this evening to confirm this, but I understand they may have been moved during the day today. Maria doesn't acknowledge its own citizens, and we need... It's something I'm really troubled about. I don't think the solution is going to be simple, but we've got to engage the people that are among us and speak to them just like we're speaking to you. It starts with a simple term that I use most every day in my work, "How can I help you?" When I'm, when I'm getting a new job assignment or when I walk in in the morning, it's "How can I help you?" Let's start the day that way. And each of us could do that with everybody that we come in contact with. It's, it's, it's too complicated for me to sum up this evening, but we've got to start the dialogue in order to find the answer quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Frederickson?
The latest I have heard is that the poverty level is between 25 and 30% in Maria. That is absolutely unacceptable. And how can we allow kids in Maria to go to bed hungry? And it affects the situation in our schools too. Because kids who do not eat learn less. And imagine one day they move away from here. They remember Maria as a place where I could not eat, I went to bed hungry. That's got not good enough. But I think it's very difficult to find the right solution, and it, it demands partnerships. It demands partnerships between the many churches we have in town, civic organizations, the city, and the county. And we, a church, or the city, or whatever civic organization who raised money for poor people, they cannot be so proud that they don't want to share and join a relevant and important partnership. And the partnership is to make sure that our kids are being raised so they have the possibility to be good citizens and stewards of the city where they grew up in. But if they go to bed hungry, they won't. But we need to make sure that we create partnerships on all levels, otherwise it won't work. I'm sorry, but we need to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
So I don't necessarily think the city's doing enough. And, but what I would say is, is that from a governmental standpoint, city government specifically, it's very hard to know what you should or what you can actually do. We could, we could come up with grand ideas of programs that would be completely sustained by the city, and they're extraordinarily expensive, and it's not really an area of expertise that we have. And what I think that we need to continue to do is support programs who are built in doing the things that, that they're trying to do. That, whether that be working with Madison County schools to ensure that we continue to have free breakfast lunches in all of our schools, or actually free lunches. So I don't know if anybody, I'm sure most people know that, but all of Madison, all the schools in Maria have free breakfast and lunch for their kids, and also backpack programs as well. And also there are programs that are trying to do that over the summertime. And we have, we have supported them in the past, and I think that we should continue to support them because it's been stated before that a child trying to learn to read and write and arithmetic will be less successful if they're hungry. And then the next step to that is to have opportunities, hopefully in the future, with a vocational school, for lack of a better term, the area technology center, that has GED training and has opportunities to teach people trades so that they can begin to earn a living, so that they can bring themselves above poverty. But to answer the question, I'm not sure that we're ever doing enough until no one is below that poverty line. But to, to, to pretend that we have all the answers in Maria without working with a lot of partners in the region and the state would be, I would be remiss if I didn't say that.
Thank you. Ms. Land?
Okay, I hope I can remember everything I wanna say about this one. This is near and dear to my heart because the majority of people living in poverty or people with disabilities or grandparents raising their grandchildren because of the drug epidemic. You know, I've seen citizens in Maria doing much more for the poverty issue than I have the government. I mean, I've seen them come together to build a community garden. I've seen them come together. I've seen a 10-year-old child this past year do more for poverty than I have the city government. For me to overcome poverty, I think, you know, we do have to focus on the vocational school. We've gotta focus on the drug problem because it's a cyclical thing, I think. Either they're poor and don't see any hope and they turn to drugs, or they're in drugs and they lose their job and become homeless.
Mr. Payne?
Well, I think we need to improve the communication between the community members and the resources. City government can be a hub for connecting the resources with the people who need them. We can support, we can partner with elements in the community that are addressing these issues, like the food program that Martinez has been running for the last couple of years. We can look at other communities who have fought the same fights that we have, but have fought them more effectively. We can learn from them, we can borrow ideas from them. I've worked in libraries for 18 years, and one thing I've learned is when other nonprofits do things exciting, they wanna share with anybody else to do the same thing because it elevates everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
You know, it's, it's pretty much a solution, I mean, a situation that all cities have. There is no solution to it because it, it happens every day. People slip through the cracks. But it shouldn't happen here in Maria. There's no reason for any party to be homeless in Maria.
Ms. LaFontaine?
So yeah, two minutes isn't enough to discuss this one. But, and I'll go back to representation. When it comes to issues of poverty, yes, the programs that are already existing, when they come to the table and ask us for funding, we shouldn't be threatening the people who run those programs because we don't like them. That's an example. We need to expand on those programs, I believe. But also, there's this tension between Maria College and the city that I've never quite fully understood. I'm a Maria College graduate, and I just see, if I take off my alumni hat and I'm sitting on the council, I see the college as an untapped resource to help us solve some of the social issues that face our city. And the reason is, yes, they have a lot of resources. They also have human capital that we don't have. I guarantee you if the council approached La Rula's and said, hey, we want to partner with you to help address our homelessness issue, they would jump on it. There would be a labor student assigned to it. It would be, you know, a fleet of, of people to help us solve some of these difficult issues while giving the students practical experience. That's just one example, but I'll, I'll go to another issue. We need people on the council who are thinking about the poor when we're making policy. So recently, when, when the $500 fine for tampering with utilities passed, I sat there very concerned about the poor being punished for being poor because if your water is cut off and you go out there to turn it on for a minute and get your family some water, you're gonna be fined. And, and to me, that is not thinking of people first. It's not taking into consideration the, the real-life situation that they're facing on a day-to-day basis. And, and some might describe it as being out of touch, you know, some of our council being out of touch with what the experience is really like. And I'll say, I am that person. I'm a single mother living here. My two kids are here with, thankfully, with people who are here supporting me so they don't go buck wild in the seats. But I'm like most folks, I'm one tragedy away from being homeless myself. You know, if anything were to go wrong, one emergency, one health emergency, so many of us are on the brink of being the very people that we are trying to serve. And what I'll say as well is, part of the reason why I think the council doesn't have that perspective is that, you're right, they're not out there in the community doing those things. I'm a court-appointed special advocate. I volunteer with children who have been abused and neglected, and I watch their experience day in and day out. I'm on a work group that is trying to address the homelessness issue. The first thing that we're doing right now is trying to assess the need so that we know when we approach the council what we're asking for. These are the types of things that I would like to see council members grab by the horns and be an example of leadership, not just showing up for the meeting on Tuesday night. Sorry, I told you two minutes.
We are, we are really running short on time. The last question, and we'll start with Mr. Payne. If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the city any way you want it, what would you do with it and why?
That's a difficult question.
What would you do with it and why?
I would probably invest it in our parks.
Mr. Land, what would you do with the million dollars? We'll come back to it. Mr. Frederickson?
That's a difficult, difficult question, of course, but I think if we had to be serious about it, I think everything boils down to education, and that's where we really need to start. But I wouldn't mind spending some of the money for a convention center too and invite Dolly Mardle and Frank Stapleton to come up and play for us, free for all citizens in town. So who knows? But a million dollars, it's, it's education. That's what I believe in.
Ms. LaFontaine?
I'm so excited because if I got this grant, I already know what I would do with it. I have a dream for Maria, not to get all, you know, wax poetic, but I would love to see a community center here. We need one. But not just any community center, a place where youth can, you know, be developed in after-school programs because we desperately need those here too. But also a place where we can rehabilitate families who have been impacted by opioid abuse. So for example, having group therapy while children are off playing or learning life skills. Or, you know, so much we could do with that sort of space that would build community and we can set a new tone for folks and, and kind of inspire them to be more engaged. But yeah, a million dollars, hands down, it would be a community center. And anything extra out of that, go into a fund to keep it running.
Thank you. Ms. Land?
Well, first, I would like to build a handicap-accessible playground, which I'm hoping we're getting ready to get, but in case we're not, that could be my first priority. And then money to the schools to fund, keep, keep kids off drug programs and other educational programs to help kids, especially to reach the ones that are more marginalized with disabilities or from, maybe the homeless children there because we have numbers of them attending schools and help, and help them in their situations.
Thank you. Mr. LaFontaine?
As a responsible homeowner, we all have bills to pay. You know, you don't have to go out and buy something new. You can pay the bills that you already have. But with a million dollars, I think I would dangle it in front of the tourism commission. Say, "Looky here, you've been supporting crafts almost exclusively." And I know there's some things you've been doing that are for sports and recreation and for conventions. There's two other things that you could be doing with that million dollars plus a year. With that, with that million dollars that I've got, I'll build a multipurpose facility in the midst of our parks that will improve... of our parks that will improve the music festivals that we can have here, that will serve Spoonbridge Festival, that will serve Farmer's Market, and be an anchor for the sports fields. If the tourism commission would commit to improving those sports fields. We've had Swing for a Cure that has brought almost 3,000 people to town on weekend, a great tourism event, great commerce for the city, and we can do that more often than one time a summer if we improve our sports fields. We can be a magnet for tournaments here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Well, I think we need to, you know, if you had a million dollars, you know, the first thing we need to do, we need to take care of our elderly, make sure that they've got what they need, take care of our kids, and get the homeless off the street.
Mr. Carter.
I think as the chair of the finance committee, I'll say a million dollars I'd go there for, but I think the idea is a sort of the overarching, life-changing kind of decision. If I were to give you that answer, it would be I would spend $500,000 for two years to allow us to move all of our fire and police officers to a hazard duty retirement. Through that, it would give us two years to make the decisions that we would need to be able to budget for that correctly. That's sort of a sexy answer because I don't like using one-time penalties for that, but or I would put it towards infrastructure and roads and find out what the most needed drainage project that we could find in the city would be, because one drainage project costs a million dollars, so it takes years to plan for those.
Thank you, and Mr. Quinn.
General improvements around the city and improvements of our infrastructure.
We have reached the end of our allotted time. I would like you all to join me in thanking our candidates.
Continue watching the WBONTV election 2018 coverage right here on wbontv.com. I'm Marissa Heppel.